March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular city council meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where everyone please remain standing, we have to ask Reverend Hernan to please come and give us a prayer.
Heads bowed. Our Father in our God, we come before you this evening with thankful and grateful hearts. We come, Lord, thankful for this opportunity that you've allowed us to gather ourselves together, to come together, to look over the governance of this fine community. So Father, as we go forward, we acknowledge your sovereignty over both heaven and earth. And therefore, we pray that the measure of authority that you have given these elected individuals will be exercised in a manner that will be good and pleasing in your sight. So we pray, Lord, that you will endow them with wisdom and knowledge and an ear to hear your voice. So we pray, Lord God, for not only that, but for their protection as a body and individually. And we pray for all of those that are assembled here that met out justice in this community and that serve the public. And we pray for their protection as well, Lord, and that they, as in the exercising of their duties, that they do it with an extra measure of mercy towards your people. So we ask right now for your divine and holy presence in this room. And everything that is said and done, we pray, Lord, that it will be done in accordance with your will. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? We did, I had one item under new business, item B, library board ballot language. Anything else we need to add to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Nolan. Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Odin.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Paul Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a quorum.
You knew he was all here.
I know.
All right. Any additions, deletions to the agenda?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the agenda?
Support.
And properly move to supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Okay. Mary McClendon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and Council to all the dignitaries and to the fine citizens of Inkster. I'm Mary McClendon, and I'm bringing you greetings from the officer, from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. And I just want you to know that just recently, the commission held a meeting to discuss videotaping the committee meetings as well as the full board meetings. And there was no decision made on that. But I want you to know that Commissioner Anderson is very much in support of those meetings being videotaped so that you can see those meetings online. He understands that, you know, the commission meetings are in the middle of the day. And of course, everybody is doing what they need to do in the middle of the day and not also always able to come downtown to go to the meetings. The public certainly are welcome to come down, but we know that's almost impossible to do with the way downtown is right now, to get into the building, to park, as well as you have your own opportunities and things that you're involved in. So he knows that because of that, it's a good thing for them to be recorded so that you will know what has happened in the meetings and know how he votes on the items that come up on the agenda. He's in full support of you being aware of what's happening with the Wayne County Commission. Also, I think many of you know the state of the county address was on last week, and there was a lot of different items on that agenda. It was very well attended. But one of the things that may be interesting to the city of Inkster is the fact that the 2020 census is coming up. And we all know that it's important that all of the residents get counted because if they're not counted, then that will impact the funding, the federal funding that comes to your community. So you might want to start thinking 2020 census to see how we can make sure that our residents will be counted, make sure that they are aware of that, and that they will in fact be counted so that you can bring in as much money as you can in your community. And that's all that I have today, Mayor, and I'm so glad that you remembered to call me. Thank you very, very.
Well, you did remind me.
I didn't want you to say that, man. I was giving you a... I was giving you a plus today. But however it went, thank you.
All right, thank you. J.B.I. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Inkster family. Thank you for giving, let me get, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give these updates. Just, just a few. It's kind of a lot, but it's just a few. First, March, March is Kidney Cancer Awareness Month. We are strongly advising everyone to see their doctor for an annual checkup, especially if kidney cancer is common in your family. In regards to state agencies, the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs has coordinated grants for the arts and cultural organizations and for city and other municipalities. They award grants to encourage development and facilities and enrichment environments of artistic, creative, and cultural activity in Michigan. For more information on that, you can go to mcaca.egrant.net. That's mcaca.egrant.net. Or feel free to give them a call at 517-241-4011. So that's grants for the arts. Moving forward, just some notes from the governor's office. During the campaign, Governor Whitmer stated that she might declare a state of emergency to deal with the opioid epidemic in Michigan. She has proposed that the state create the best treatment system in the country by increasing funding for mental health and establishing a more effective prescription drug monitoring system. Although the governor has not declared a state of emergency to combat the opioid problem currently, last week, Michigan received $10 million in support from former New York mayor, Mayor Bloomberg, his charity to improve treatment and support for people dealing with addiction. Recently, in the legislature, the Michigan House voted unanimously Tuesday to spend an additional $10 million to compensate people who were wrongfully convicted of crimes. This $10 million will replenish a fund that is almost empty. The bill will help settle outstanding claims of $21.3 million to $24.2 million. Last week, Governor Whitmer proposed adding up to $20 million to the wrongful imprisonment compensation fund. This is a long overdue effort to right the wrongs of imprisoning innocent people. The specific legislation authorizing the fund is listed in the past legislation in HB 4286. You can find that on the House website. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we have no presentations today, but we'll move on down to the consent agenda. Ever had a chance to look at the minutes? Kim Howard, would you like to tell us something?
No.
Okay, do we need to make any corrections to the minutes? Well, okay. Do we have a motion? Accept.
So moved.
Support.
And properly move and support it, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Boards and commissions. We have some vacancies we need to fill.
Yeah.
Yes. Make the motion to appoint Jason Turner to the Parks and Rec Commission?
There's a motion. Do we already have his information? The application on file?
Employee.
I know.
I know, but I don't.
That's another discussion, but there's an application to be on boards and commissions. You have to fill out, then we can vote tonight if we already had it.
I'll get with him.
Okay. To nominate him.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You all told me the last meeting or the one before that, that someone else wanted to be on the Parks and Rec Commission, Tania Jane?
Yes, from your district, I think.
Yeah, but I don't have any way to contact her to tell her she needs to turn in paperwork.
So what district does Jason live in? And is it, whose appointment? Is it George or anybody?
Well, the person in my district resigned.
Oh, that's right, that's right. So Jason lives in your district?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, so Jason, he's nominating Jason, and you have not nominated anybody?
No, I haven't had a chance to talk to them, but you all did mention that she had contacted you about having her name proposed for Parks. Call and tell her to...
So we have two vacancies, okay. All right, so we have Jason Turner has been nominated, and then we'll...
Three vacancies.
Okay, three vacancies. District five.
We do have one, but I don't have anybody that wants to.
Okay.
You know, because I've asked him.
Nobody? Any defaults to you?
Default to me?
If you can't find anybody, you gotta step in.
What days are, what days are Parks and Rec's? What days are they on?
On Thursday evening.
Then you'll kick me off anyway.
All right, we gotta find somebody. Your district.
It has to be in my district, right?
Yeah.
But see, a lot of problems I'm running into, they don't want to send in a resume, so I can't argue with them.
They don't have to send a resume, just a little application.
Application, okay.
Police could email to you.
Okay.
Any other nominations?
I got a question.
Sure.
Because it says the meeting first Tuesday of each month, so that has changed?
Does it move to Thursdays now?
I believe so, yes.
They're gonna change it.
They're gonna change.
They gotta get that approval.
From us?
Well, they're gonna approve it and then bring it to you.
Okay. Because I'm asking, because these dates were sort of solidified, you know, when we first moved the budget first of the year, when we sent all the dates in, so just want to keep up with, you know, pick we look in the calendar and see what dates are going to be.
Well, I'm the secretary, and we've done a poll, so at the next meeting, we'll
approve the poll, the majority vote, and then we'll bring it to council. But we have to remember that it has to be based on when people are available.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll be looking for that. Any other nominations?
Yes, sir, Mayor, I'd like to reappoint William Miller, Board of Review.
We already have his information, so you guys ready to vote? Do we have any support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
I also like to reappoint Carolyn Smith, Housing Redevelopment, Mr. Howard.
All right, she's, we already have her information too. Do we have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to previous business.
You have to remove from the table. You want me to read? Consideration and approval to convey three properties, 4500 Inkster Road, 4360 Hickory, and 4310 Middle Bell to the Inkster Housing Authority, and this item needs to be removed from the table.
So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to remove it from the table.
Okay, you both did. You got any support?
Support.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
You don't remove it? You don't want to remove it?
Oh, move from the, oh.
Move from the table. Okay, it passed anyway. All right. Okay, so now we need a motion. Remember, there's three properties here, we were talking about separating one? So whoever makes the motion, please separate. And add any additional language you would like, any clauses or stipulations to your motion. Don't everybody speak at once.
Well, we don't exactly know what you, what are the first two addresses? Everybody knows 4310.
4500 is Inkster Road, and 4360 is Hickory.
Hickory.
That's the, that's the Invision Center.
That's the Invision Center.
And we just conveyed those two.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the, what you call it? So how do you want this done now?
We need a motion to convey the, whatever you want to convey, or whatever stipulations you want to place on.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss it once somebody makes the motion. Then we can amend or change whatever we need to do.
Okay, I'll give it a stab.
Okay.
I move that we convey 4500 Inkster Road and 4360 Hickory Street to Inkster, the Inkster Housing Authority, with the condition that if the Inkster Housing Authority is dissolved or removed for any reason, the property reverts to the city.
Back to the city.
Back to the city.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have support?
Support.
Because it probably moves, I know we need some discussion on this. There were some questions that came up in orientation. We didn't have some information. I think the executive director is here now. Would you like him to come up and give us some additional information?
Yes, need clarity, actually.
Okay, sure. Come on, Paul, could you please come to the microphone? One, you want to answer? You want him to answer?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
My question is, the property, is it HUD property? Or is it housing property?
So the properties are titled to a housing commission or authority, depending on what state you're in. We cannot sell or demo any of our physical structures or sell any property without approval of HUD.
Okay, now, the property, so HUD owns the property, what you're saying? They own the buildings?
No, I'm going to say that they own both, the building and the property.
Okay, so they own the land, so you're saying they own the land as well?
Correct, because we cannot dispose of any land without approval from HUD.
Okay, now I'm confused.
Me too.
The question is, who is the property titled to? Is it Inkster Housing or Inkster Housing Authority? Who, somebody has to own the land.
So all parcels are titled or deeded to the Inkster Housing Commission.
Okay. Now, I understand you cannot sell, dispose, demo without their approval because you receive money from them, funds, right?
Correct.
You report to them. I mean, they're your governing agents. But they don't, do they own the property? Are their names on the deeds?
So that's an answer I will have to get for you. On how they, technically, how that side of it works.
Because we gotta know who we're conveying to.
So, all the other parcels are titled to the Inkster Housing Commission, but I will certainly get an answer for you.
All right, the only problem is now that we tabled it, so now it dies. So we gotta start all over again. So I wish we could have had these answers before, you know. And just so we don't waste any more time, I think the sentiment is, if we have to deed it over to you and HUD, it's going to be a lease agreement. All right, if we're dealing over to Inkster Housing, then we can come back and revisit that. So that's, I think, the sentiment of council.
I will pass that along to the field office.
All right.
Are there any other questions that we need to?
Any other question? Any other questions we need from him?
Right.
Oh, yeah, another question. Because when this, when this all came up, Invision Center, now, I understand that Invision Center was part of, basically, the building or blocks of HUD, okay? Playground was, was best brought from to the street was, was the city of Inkster. So is that still the same? Do we still own the playground portion? Y'all own the Invision Center and we own the?
They don't, they don't own the Invision Center.
According to the title, 4360 Hickory is titled to the village of Inkster.
Yeah, that's us.
The building.
The building. Yeah, the address.
Well, it's the lot and appretence and so of it. I would defer the question to your attorney, but it's my understanding that it's parcel and all appretence and so of it.
Okay, because people who've been here will tell us about the wall that used to be there to separate the building from the playground. I just want to make sure that land separate is, is did properly on West Inksters and West Housing.
And it wasn't an issue when the Inkster Housing Commission was a department of the city because the city would have owned everything, it would have been part of the city. When Inkster Housing Commission separated out from as a department of the city, all other parcels were deeded back to Inkster Housing Commission. These two parcels, according to everything that our attorney's been able to find, your attorney's been able to find, are still that the ownership of the village of Inkster.
And could you find out also, even if the HUD is not on the deed, because what you're saying, it sounds like they're not on any of the other deeds, but do they have any type of lien on any of your real property? Is there some sort of lien where you can't do anything with your property that Inkster Housing actually owns? That's what I would like to find out. Is something legal filed at the register of deeds for HUD, name on it? Any other, any other questions? Okay, all right, well, thank you, appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Well? Do you want to retract your motion?
Certainly.
Okay. Motion is be rescinded? Oh, we would have, no, we'd have to vote.
Yeah, we would have to carry something through.
We've already moved it from the table. We would have had to vote one way or the other.
I retract the motion that was just made.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. All right, previous business is taken off the... You had to be careful. You know. All right, here we are, second readings.
A second reading and the approval of the Inkster nuisance abatement program that would expedite blight elimination through rehabilitation and demolition.
Come on, Mr. Chair.
Okay, for accept and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
A second reading and approval of the MDEQ mandated illicit discharge elimination program, ordinance being added to our existing storm water ordinance as a new standalone chapter in Title V Public Works of the Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Support.
And properly move and support it, discussion? All those, oopsie.
Yeah, I sort of forgot, Zach, what's about, you know, she's here. Could you just give us a brief synopsis of what that was?
Good evening, Mayor Council. This ordinance is the final piece that the city needs in order for the city to review the stormwater management facilities that are required on developments that are coming through, planning, the planning department. In addition to that, it also enables the city to do their own inspection, investigation if there is a pollutant or a suspected pollutant discharge, and then also recoup the money that is incurred with that from the, whoever it is that is found to make the discharge, make the pollutant discharge.
Tell me, does every building that's required to do a stormwater runoff, does it have to have a stormwater runoff? Because we talked about one point, whether it ran off into a park or a certain area into a grass?
There are limitations. Smaller properties don't have to contain as much water. They do, they contain a 10-year storm as opposed to larger pieces of property that are over five acres in size, they have to retain up to 100-year storm.
Okay.
So.
Over five acres, then they would have to have this retention?
They would still have to have retention, but it would be for a smaller event, so essentially less amount of stormwater runoff, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Carrie.
Sure.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. New business.
Item A, consideration and approval authorizing the DPS to approve a contract in the amount of $625,470 for... Bit...
Bid again.
Bid again Contractors Inc. for the construction of approximately 320 lineal feet of 24-inch bypass sewer located in the Middle Bell Road just north of the Inkster Valley Golf Course entrance driveway to restore the gravity flow in the existing 24-inch sewer. Additionally, requesting authorization to approve a 25% contingency for unforeseen conditions and to provide construction administration and inspection services. The total project cost is $781,840.
You gotta move something.
I did, I did too, okay. So moved.
Support.
And properly move and support it, discussion?
Yes. Now, we have an equipment that's going to come in and repair what all cut me messed up. Now, back to Councilperson Wiley. Is that some, that's kind of warranted or guaranteed? If they don't do it right, then who are we going to go back to?
Well, if they don't do it right, it'd breach a contract. But is, do they warrant, warranty their work for a period of time? I mean, as long as they're in business, if they mess it up, you can go after them. But it's when they dissolve themselves.
Yeah, I guess I need to ask, well, how long they been in business? You said it's a rep for cut, how long they been in business? 20 years or? Okay. But I guess that falls back with administration because you guys look at the, all the paperwork on what they do, how long they been doing it.
Yeah.
And, and that was done?
When it done work.
That was done? Where you went back and talked to these people? I mean, he says that that's administration's responsibility to check on these things. Now, when you talk about warranties and he says they've been in business a long time, whichever, whatever that means, you, when you, do you ever ask for references like you would on any job?
Absolutely, jobs like this.
And then it's not just give me your references, because you know, people give you their friends when you... Do you ask, what were the last four jobs you did? And talk to those people.
Right.
But what about pulling it up on the company up on the internet?
I'm doing it right now.
If you want to know.
So.
But Chisholm done it already, it's over 20 years.
Yeah, somebody knows for 20 years.
Yeah, so these, this was an open bid contract, and you know, the bids generally are evaluated by the administration along with our engineering consultant, and they have experience with them, I'm sorry?
Finish, the nose.
And so they have, you know, they, generally speaking, I'm sure this, I don't, can't speak for this exact company, Bud may be able to weigh in, but nine times out of 10, they have experience dealing with these companies, either here on prior projects or in another community. So oftentimes, there is a relationship with these companies beyond just taking their word for it from a reference standpoint. So, you know, generally speaking, someone that's involved with the evaluation process will have some direct or indirect experience with working with this, working with any contractor that we select and the contractor that's a part of this specific contract before council this evening. So, but I don't know if you, if you know this contractor have had, had any experience with them.
I have not worked with them. I know finish has on other projects. I know they work with, they work with Westland. They have been on other projects in this city. So I, I am aware of them.
So the point being, we, you know, there is some...
History.
History and, and we're just not just relying on what they commit to or what they propose or put in, into their, uh, bid on paper.
You know, the only reason I bring these things up is because this happens to us too frequently to just sit here and accept. Which seems to be what has happened in the past. Which is why we're sitting here getting ready to put out seven hundred thousand dollars. And I'm trying to avoid that, or at least make us think that, you know, or ask questions or ask to see those results that you all claim are evident. So, that's my concern.
And those are excellent questions.
How long does the state give us to comply with them? Or they start handing down fines?
Oh, they can fine you by the day.
Right, okay.
Um, so there's no, we don't have any time.
Will we be considered, and I think that, and I'm not sure, I'm speaking for myself. Um, I don't deal with them. I believe it up to my administration to do the right thing. Um, if it's something that has to do with fines from the state, I'm quite sure they're not gonna get some company that's gonna tear it up, because at the end of the day, we still gonna be fined if it's not fixed.
Oh, we're in trouble. This is gonna fall back on the city.
So, anything that has to do with the state, I think that I can kinda, because anybody can make a mistake. It doesn't matter if you been here a hundred years. Nobody is perfect but the man upstairs. But I'm gonna trust my administration when it comes down to, um, doing things that has, that's required by the state. If they don't fix it right, we are gonna get fined, and you don't wanna get fined. So, and I understand what you're saying, but when we get the information, we pull it up on the internet and we do our little digital just, because do they have time to sit there and just give a whole portfolio all the time? I don't know. I don't know what their, 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 their time is looking at. But I know when I get there, I pull it up, and I look to see who's, you know, what's what. So maybe that's what we need to start doing, or, you know, or either they start including in the package, I don't know.
Maybe we should start giving you more information on the company.
Yeah, because, I mean, what, but if, but if I don't see what I want, I always call and ask anyway, so. But, uh, but this one right here is, we have to really get on this like today.
Yeah, we have to.
I have, I have a question. I'm on their website. What is a pre-qualified contractor? What's that mean?
Qualified with the state.
City of Ann Arbor Footing Drain Disconnect Project. Pre-qualified contractor.
Sounds like they're pre-qualified with the city of Ann Arbor for that particular.
Is that all it means?
Just like we have contractors, we've, last meeting, we voted to, we have four, five contractors now. That we can bid on projects, so they're qualified with the city of Inkster. So that means they, they went through some sort of vetting process.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Protester. It passes. Okay, item B.
Consideration to approve the ballot language for the Leanna Hicks Public Library to be placed on the August sixth, two thousand and nineteen ballot.
We have a motion?
The move?
Support. And probably move and supported, discussion? Um, there's some language change that someone proposed. Think we have to incorporate that. Yeah, you got to incorporate that change.
Weren't we also supposed to look at some language further into the ordinance?
Right.
Yeah, I think somebody, somebody mentioned that. I mean, my que, my question was answered by Ms. Williams. But if, if there's some other information you guys needed, did you, did you get it?
No.
No, because we didn't, I don't think we had that ordinance when we were.
My question, my, my statement was that the ordinance still shows that, uh, the historical commission is in
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Has oversight, and I need to know if that was changed when, where, and how.
Yeah. I mean, we were, you know, yeah. That we have to take a look at. Neil would have to take a look at that.
Because my concern is if, how can you be not an entity of the city, but then take tax dollars and do what you're gonna do with it? That's my concern.
What she's speaking of, there's a Inkster City Ordinance that says the historic, Inkster Historical Commission has, provides oversight over the library board, or the library.
Can, can I?
Not yet.
So that's why the question, I'm just explaining, that's why the question arose. That's why the question arose. Now, it may be when they broke off, then the Historical Commission does not have oversight anymore, I suspect. But we, we will see. Let the lawyers take a look at it and we'll, you know, we can find out. Now, if y'all wanna move forward to vote, that's up to you. I mean, it's, but that was a question that was brought up, that's some information that at least a couple of the council members would like to have.
Well, it's a, it's a big concern for me. I need an answer.
So you want to table it until this?
But it's, it's, uh, Mayor Potemps' motion, right?
Oh, Mayor Potemps.
Do you wanna table it, I guess is the question. Accept a friendly amendment, I guess amendment.
Um, well, let me say this first, um, the, the, um, Historical Commission before the library, uh, decided to, to, uh, separate, that commission has stopped existing way before then.
Stopped operating?
Yes, operated.
Okay. Yeah, we just, it just got rebirthed.
Okay.
Recently, right?
But that's neither here nor there. If our ordinance says it, then it's still the law. So that needs to be cleared up, clarified, rectified, or whatever it is, it needs to be fixed.
If it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. You know, if it, if, but we need somebody, we need some sort of legal.
Right.
So are we saying it has to be changed, or it needs to be changed?
We don't know.
We need to, we need the research that tells us how and why it happened, and what that means for the citizenry that, that votes a millage to give our tax dollars to the library.
Okay, well, um, let's, I'll, I'll motion with, with tables into the next meeting, until we get the answers, uh, to, to the ordinance.
Okay. Do we have support for that?
Support.
Alright, discussion on the motion to table. Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Alright. Public participation. Zach Eversole.
Good morning, Council and Mayor and everybody.
Deacon.
Hello.
Thanks for everybody that's here. Um, I'm here today to, uh, try to bring awareness to eating healthier. Um, as, as I was growing up, I learned a little bit about growing vegetables and I gained a little bit of a talent and just a natural ability. I, I, I like it. Um, I started looking around the city. I've, I've lived here for three years. I see just plots of land everywhere and there's no food being grown on it, and people are hungry. Uh, everybody's hungry. Anybody in this room, they need vegetables, they need healthy food in their life. And, uh, I, I'm here to ask it, uh, just, just for a little bit of, uh, help and maybe some land that I could probably grow on to give back to the community. Um, yes, ma'am?
I have a parcel that's already approved.
Oh, you do? Well, I'm here. I have plants already started, um, and I've started collecting material to build, you know, raise beds and stuff like that. Um, it'd be a way, a shame and a waste for me to not use that talent to help at least the community around me, so. Um, with, with your guys' blessing and some help, I, I definitely wanna get that started.
Well, of course, we support you. Zach Eversole.
Yes.
We appreciate you even offering, um, because it's a lot of work out to keep a garden going. But sometimes people have come to us in the past, they've identified parcels we may own, and we just allow them to use them.
Okay.
Um, but there's plenty of parcels. We own many, many parcels, so. You know, you can either identify some, or we can tell you all day, we, we have plenty. Um, you can contact Ms. Fleming, she can give you all the parcels you want. So.
Awesome.
That's, that's not a problem.
That's really good. That's good for you guys.
And next to, we have people, some block clubs that I know, um, I know the Princeton Block Club. I know he has a, a lot on Yale. But the, uh, only thing, the members are getting older, and he's trying to find people to help him, we do it. And, and at the end of the year, he gives, uh, when the crop is done, he goes to seniors and give out food. So we may need to give you his number as well.
Yeah. Yeah, any, anybody that I can give it to, too. Last, last year, I was walking door to door, my, up and down my streets, because, I mean, I just, it's, it's ridiculous sometimes what I produce, but
Oh, that's wonderful.
It needs to be given away, you know? People are hungry, so.
We have food pantries?
Yeah, we have food pantries, churches, I mean, that's, that we can do, for sure.
Yeah, definitely. I'll get, I'll definitely.
Okay, get her card.
Thank you.
Thank you. Officer Lebo. She here? Oh, there's her.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I was so happy walking in today. There was still light out. I'm just gonna say, I was, it was nice. So, as we know, closer is getting, or summer is getting close, which means you get to hear me drone on still a little bit longer. So a few things that we got, first and foremost, um, applications are being accepted for our Citizen Police Academy second session. We are hoping to have them in by Friday, so that way we can get this rolling, uh, very early on in April. So if you're interested in applying, um, you can pick up applications at the police department. You can call me, I can email you an application. Basically, it's, uh, our Citizen Police Academy. Talk to anyone that went to our first session. You learn a little bit about police work, kind of an overview of everything, as well as participate in a mock crime scene, go on a ride along with a police officer, um, participate in a firearms training simulator, and just in general, get a better understanding of how a police department works and demystify, um, police work, and also set some, the record straight on some things you may see on TV that just doesn't necessarily happen. So it's about education and really a partnership. You know, I, our first academy session went really well, and I'm excited for this one, so I hope you'll consider joining us. Next, this Wednesday, which is the twentieth, at Gracie C. Postaria, at six P.M. is our next Coffee with a Cop, or I guess Pizza with the Police, I suppose, because it's at Gracie C. Pizza's on us? Come on by. We are, no, there's no agendas, just, uh, some pizza, some good times and some conversation. Um, just a good way to get to know the, uh, police department, police officers in your neighborhood and bring any attention to issues that you may have. Um, I am excited for this one. Saturday, April thirteenth is the Easter Egg Hunt. Very excited. Um, from eleven to two P.M., it's Wednesday at the Booker Doza Recreation Complex, which is, uh, twenty-twenty-five Middle Belt. It is the, uh, second annual event hosted by the Inkster Task Force and the Unity Community Campaign. We are asking that everyone register. It is free, but we like to get an idea of how many people are coming, so we can have enough food, because there are light refreshments. So if you register by April sixth on Eventbrite, just search Inkster Easter Egg Hunt. I have flyers over there on the table, along with everything else I'm talking about, so I hope you'll come out. We are going to have an Easter Egg Hunt, a helicopter marshmallow drop, as well as photos with the Easter Bunny, face painting, arts, crafts, games, and more. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Last year was a blast, and I look forward to this year. Um, we are starting a partnership, well, not a partnership, it's, we're continuing a partnership with Michigan State Police to host a Michigan Youth Leadership Academy. What this basically is, is we're looking for Inkster boys ages fourteen to fifteen that are on the right path. You know, they need, um, they are already excelling, they're doing a good job, but what we wanna do is give them some more tools in their tool, tool belt. And what the Leadership Academy is, it's a five-day program from June twenty-third to June twenty-seventh. And it's actually, they stay, it's a stay-away camp up at the Michigan State Police Training Academy in Lansing. And there, they learn interviewing skills, resume building, um, leadership skills. They actually go to like a leadership, like, almost like a team-building thing. It's really cool. I went last year, it was a lot of fun. They learn how to scuba dive, which, you know, not really leadership, but it's fun. Um, wait, even last time, went on a tour of the Breslin Center at Michigan State University, as well as went to the state capitol. It was a really good time. It's a great opportunity for our, our young men. I hope you'll consider, um, sending whomever you know. Like I said, ages fourteen to fifteen years old. It is just men at this time, or boys, I should say, boys at this time. If you're interested, reach out to me, Officer Lebo. And that's June twenty-third through June twenty-seventh. We'll have more information and getting out there. I do have flyers over on the table. And last but not least, we are currently looking for organizations who would like a free booth at the next National Night Out. I'm gonna be very pregnant at that point in time, so I'm starting early, starting early, please. Help me out here. We are looking for anyone who wants a free booth. Last year, we had a big party in the police department parking lot. So we are basically gonna do the same thing. We're gonna have entertainment, it's a form of a concert, as well as, you know, kind of similar ideas. It's in the early stages, so I can't give you definitives. But last year, we had about fifty organizations out there giving out information to our citizens, as well as with like a video game truck, a basketball, uh, the concert, karaoke. It was a lot of, it was just a fun, community-building event. National Night Out is a national initiative where police and community come together on the second Tuesday in August throughout the entire country. So it's really fun to be a part of, and I'm glad Inkster can continue to be a part of it. So I hope if you have an organization, you will come find me, and we can put you on the list. Thank you.
I have a quick question for Officer Lebo.
Yes.
Um, the safety event that's coming up at Canterbury Woods, is that just for their, is that for, uh, all kids in the community, or?
Canterbury, mm. Yeah. Primarily just Canterbury Woods.
Okay.
But it's community members? Someone's trauma, what you discussed with them? Okay. Right now, it's just Canterbury Woods.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Savage, on behalf of Robert Savage.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrew Savage. I'm here on behalf of my father, Robert Savage, three-seven-six Longfellow, a lifelong resident and a thirty-six-year employee of the, uh, city of Inkster. We've had the unfortunate need to use Inkster Fire Department for EMS, um, over the last few years. It's unfortunate in two ways. First, his health is failing. It's hard for any family member to realize that their parents' health is failing. But it's unfortunate at the level of service the Inkster Fire Department provides him every time they've come out. They didn't bring no equipment in on scene. They don't treat the patient. One time, um, my father fell, broke his arm. They refused to treat his pain, because we're a mile away from the hospital. I said, no, you're more like two and a half miles away, and you can treat it now. That's why you carry this equipment and these medications. The last time, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, he was very weak, had some respiratory distress. We called the fire department. The, the senior crew member, when he got there, I challenged them, it's like, where's your equipment? You need to assess my father. We do everything in a truck. The senior crew member said, I heard the address. I knew it was Bob. Bob's a friend of mine. Well, if that's the way he treats a friend, what does a normal citizen get? Now, the junior crew member started to challenge me on protocols. In his defense, he had no idea that he was talking with a person that's been a licensed paramedic longer than he's been alive. When he finally discovered he was on the losing end of that discussion, he said, that's how we've always done it. But that doesn't make it right. Um, and then they walked an eighty-three-year-old man with respiratory distress out to the stretcher. Now, you have, the fire department has a very nice power stretcher. Strike or the manufacturer says it shouldn't go upstairs. There's three steps up on the porch. The next thing the manufacturer says is, you need to have your stair chair so you can take the patient out to the stretcher. So they walked a respiratory distress patient without having assessed him to find out exactly how bad, uh, his condition is. I would challenge the leadership of the fire department to change that culture. At one point, I was number one on the Inkster Fire Department hire list. Unfortunately, they hired number seven. But I think back now, after seeing this, as a young paramedic, if I had joined the fire department, would I be that person and, and give that pour of care? The fire department provides advanced life support. You have paid lots of money for equipment, you've trained your firefighters. They need to use that training and that equipment to treat these citizens. The citizens and visitors of Inkster deserve better. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mr. Savage, before you leave, can you stop with the fire chief there, 'cause we can get some data, so we can ascertain who was given this particular care, so we can make any corrections as necessary?
Okay.
I appreciate it. He's right there, it's Chief Hubbard right there.
And, and he's, he's not always been the fire, there's been other times I've tried contacting the fire chief and not gotten anything back, but that was before his tenure, so.
Yeah, he hasn't been here that long. Okay, I, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Shirley Walker.
I'm gonna be serious today. Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
Counsel. I lied. Uh, I'm making another, I'm making an announcement again from the last couple of weeks. You know, we are giving the divas and dogs. New Birth Baptist Church Sisters Wear the Purpose present a divas and dog. I'm gonna say food, but it's a luncheon, but it is food. At Booker Doza Recreation Center, uh, on Middle Belt, Saturday, March the twenty-third, from twelve to three-thirty, wear your fanciest or craziest bad hats. R S V P, which is nothing, is ten dollars a ticket. R S V P, which is nothing, is ten dollars a ticket. Uh, we still have a little bit more tickets, but we're gonna have a lot of food. We do not want to waste it. So we need all the help we can, because we helping doing something in our church. So we appreciate everyone up on staff and out in the audience to get a ticket from me today, and it's just ten dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I told you I was gonna be serious.
Yeah, I was serious. City Clerk.
No items tonight, Mayor.
City Treasurer.
No comment.
No comment. Councilman Owen.
One thing. Uh, at the last meeting, I, I spoke on, um, at the last council meeting, I spoke about the problem, or not a problem, but the potholes at the corner of Michigan Avenue by the police department. It appears that they're getting bigger, and I think we need to deal with them right away, because after a while, somebody gonna mess their car up and they gonna come at the city about the roads. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Chisholm.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. Um, two things to DPS. Seven five one Patterson Court, there's a street light there, uh, that I guess a citizen had been trying to call in and reported it was out. And that's one of the newer lights too, so I guess something might be just malfunction. And then also, Omonticello, right in that curve where a water main was recently repaired, at the end of a residence driveway, a huge pothole is developing. It wasn't there before, and I know pretty soon they'll be asking us to repair everything on their vehicles, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, also, I never really see what happens with the water repairs in Inkster Road and Carlisle. I had mentioned it last week, the Bud had asked you, or I'm sorry, last council meeting, you gave me, uh, the information that it was in the works pretty much, and I actually got to witness you in the backhoe out there digging it up. And I was like, "Oh, wait a minute." I was like, "He ain't got the suit and tie on tonight. He ain't making it happen." And I just wanted to recognize that, because I often don't get to see what all employees do and to just come by on a Sunday. Because at eight o'clock, you guys weren't out there. By midday, you were out there and had it done before the day was over, so that was, that was great. And also, I would like to say congratulations to Chief Riley on being a Silver Beaver recipient. Wait a minute. Wait, no, wait. That, hold on, it's from the Boy Scouts of America. I'm gonna explain what it is. Yeah, I guess so. All right. Wow, wow.
We need a picture.
Um, it is a, an award that's to recognize scouters of exceptional character who have provided distinguished service within a council. So I just wanted to bring that up to the citizens, that he was one of the persons that was selected to be a recipient, and congratulations, Chief.
Very nice.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just have one thing that is a concern. You know, I'm very cognizant of how we look to other people, um, as a city, and especially watching what's going on in West Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. Who owns the pawn shop? Does the city own the pawn shop?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to request that we do a much better job of keeping that property in good shape. There is grass growing, there are weeds growing, there's, the building is not painted. And that's the first thing you see once you enter the city of Inkster from the east heading west. And it's just not a good look for our city. We know we're better than that. Now, do we need to, to, um, bring back paint to town, so we can get some volunteers to go over there and throw paint on that building? Or just what do we need to do? Because I don't want to see us looking like that. Uh, it just bothers me. So whatever we can do, I'll be glad to help do it or whatever. But we gotta, we gotta change that look.
Yeah, we'll definitely maintain it better. I didn't, I wasn't pleased with the, the grass cutting or lack of weed whacking
Right.
from last year. But, um, we can have a paint party?
Hey.
We have a paint party, yeah. Not, not just at that particular place.
Oh, oh. Oh, well, yeah. I mean, but it, it's really an eyesore when you enter the city. It really is.
That's next to elementary school, too.
Right, right. Next to daily school.
Uh, we'll, we'll jump on that.
The other thing is, I just want to remind everyone, and there's, there are a few brochures, uh, flyers, not brochures, on the table. The Michigan Metro Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated is inviting all senior citizens to their annual Golden Age Reception, which will be held on Sunday, April fourteenth, at, uh, the Inkster Recreation Center, the Dozier. This year, we're gonna have a ballroom dancing demonstration, along with a little lesson in ballroom dancing. And we're going to have a young group of women who are dancers, the Divine Stand Dancers of Inkster, perform. And we're gonna do karaoke. So we're gonna have a party on this day. And, uh, the theme is age is an issue of mind over matter. If you don't mind, it doesn't matter. So we don't want our seniors to just come and sit and be talked to. We want our seniors to come and be engaged in life, and this is the way we're trying to do it. You do have the R S V P. The phone number is on the flyer. And if you don't get, uh, someone to pick up the phone, just leave a name and, uh, we'll handle it from there. And that's because we need to know how many people we're going to feed. Uh, there's no cost to this. There's never been a cost. And this year, Top Ladies Michigan Metro will celebrate their thirty-fifth anniversary in the city of Inkster. We were chartered in, in the city of Inkster. Thank you. That's it.
Councilwoman Howard. Councilwoman Wiley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I was asked to notify the city of Inkster that the New Step Program, whose CEO is Event Brock, is sponsoring a chili cook-off. They are asking all you premier chili makers to put five dollars in to become a contestant. And then you can strut your chili. Uh, this is being held at New Birth Baptist Church on March thirty-first. I don't have a calendar, so I don't know what day that is. It's a Sunday? Okay, look at y'all. It's, uh, March the thirty-first, a Sunday from one to three P M. Now, she did tell me she had another flyer, which would tell you how much, you know, a cup or a teaspoonful costs, but that didn't get to me. But I am urging all of you to, especially you chili makers, to join in. Come out, make your chili, and then there will be a prize for the best chili.
Best chili.
So you're being challenged, all you chili makers. There will be flyers over here on the desk for you, and I hope you will support her. New, uh, New Step has done quite a lot of things. I think she bought me like five boxes of Butterfingers and, and Snickers for the I Can Candy Convoy. So let's support each other, what we do. So you can't really expect support if you're not giving it, okay? Uh, second thing is, we're calling all veterans. We want to turn this Memorial Day Parade, which is being held on the twenty-seventh, Monday, the twenty-seventh, and we want every, we know there's tons of veterans in the city of Inkster, but they don't always come out. So if you're aware of a veteran, we want them to be all in the parade. In fact, we're planning on, um, four, four floats, four floats this year, and we want veterans riding on them. So, uh, calling all veterans, you can contact me or you can contact Al for the, um, Memorial Day Parade. Uh, the second thing is, we need volunteers too, to help decorate those floats when they get here. So if you're interested in helping with decorating the floats, you can get in touch with me or Al again. Okay, another thing is, a lady called me and said she enjoyed the Black History Month so much. So she wanted to know if we were interested in doing something for Juneteenth. So because of how we plan things, if you're interested in being on a committee to do something, and she wants to do it for the week of Juneteenth. Uh, Juneteenth is a Wednesday, so it's right in the middle, and that's when we'd have the actual Juneteenth celebration. But you would have events that week. Nothing like twenty-eight days again, don't worry. But, uh, she was interested in that. So if you're interested in that too, you should contact me and let me know. And I think that's all for right now. Thank you.
Don't forget, I think, Cup Community Up.
Yes, I was gonna say, they're planning, uh, Juneteenth celebration.
Okay, well, we can all do it together. That's not a problem.
Middle Man of Block Club, too.
Yeah, I know they do that all the time too, but she just brought to that, my attention, and I figured that we should get on it right now, because these things come up on you real quick, you know? And everybody should have some sort of input into it. So if you're interested, let me know, or if your organization was planning something.
If you give me her number, I'll pass it on, because I'm working on their committee.
Oh, you are? Okay. Well, let me know. I'll get her and we can, we can, if you're gonna have a meeting, we can have them, you know, give her that stuff anyway. She was the lady that had all the African clothing for the, um,
Oh, okay.
for the, uh, fashion show.
Okay.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proctor.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Pastor Hearn for coming and saying the prayer. And let's say congratulations on your sixth annual pastor of, at Christian Faith Ministry. Okay, moving right along, um, I have a couple announcements. The Lena Horne Foundation, they are, I'm sorry, say that. I didn't get this right. Friends of the Lena. Lena Hicks Library Foundation. Library Foundation. Now I'm thinking two things on here. Well, let's get to the point of it. But they're having, they're having, uh, membership drive here. How you can help the Friends of the Foundation. Friends of the Lena Hicks Foundation welcomes the help of any organization or person. The foundation is known for its annual book sales, as well as volunteering at the library events. You can help by volunteering your time during the Friends of Lena Hicks Library and Foundation and renewing your membership yearly. And if you don't have a year, uh, membership there, you're welcome to, to get one. Uh, I'll refer you to the library on how much that costs. But it would be a, a nice thing when we talk about the library to, to get extra funds and revenue for that, that would be nice. Also, the library is hosting a healthy eating and understanding a plant-based diet. They have this, uh, at the library, which is located at one zero eight six Inkster Road, and it's held last Friday of each month at four, from four o'clock to five thirty. Say it again.
Is it gonna cook too? It sounds, it sounds good.
Well, it's, it's interesting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Also, I am, I am hosting a community-wide slash advisory meeting on Thursday, the twenty-first, at the Booker Dozer Rec复 complex. Uh, number, I do town hall meeting a couple, couple of times a year. I haven't done one in a while. So, uh, we'll be doing the town hall meeting. I'm inviting everyone to come, along with Mayor and Council. Uh, basically, what I do is listen to the citizens. They bring their concerns and I try to see what we can do to bring them back to council, but if they're there, they can hear them just as well. So this is basically a meeting on, for you guys, to come and voice your concerns on what you think should be happening in the city of Inkster, what you like, what you don't like, and see how we can put those things together. Last but not least. Oh, it's at six o'clock.
What was the date?
The twenty-first. It's Thursday. Every council meeting, I always say, shop Inkster. And I know some people that ask, "Well, what is there to shop?" And there are, we do have businesses in the city. We have gas stations, we have two restaurants, we have a couple of drugstores, but those, those are viable businesses. And what I want to say is that, um, we need to support those businesses, because if we don't support them, they will eventually leave the city or, or they probably be able to survive in the city if we don't support those businesses. And most businesses, if we're supporting them and we do business with them properly, they would tell their friends to come into the city as well. So I'll be saying that everyone, when you can, to support the business that you like in the community, and keep shopping in Inkster. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to congratulate Pastor Hearn also. We had a chance to attend the service yesterday. It was great. Community Black Grant Funds. I attended the Wayne County Commissioners Meeting last week, where they voted on changing the formula of how they distribute community black grant funds, which will help the city of Inkster. The formula, we get money from, from federal government, from HUD, um, and it's based on, um, the median income in various communities. For forty years, we were distributing that money based on population. So the richer communities that have no people who meet the criteria were getting money, and basically, they didn't even know what to do with, you know, the gross points. They were just creating stuff and projects to spend the money on. Uh, communities like ours, E Corrs, Allen Park, we got the short end of the stick. Well, forty years later, we corrected it to some degree, where it's more fair, and we'll be getting an additional roughly fifty thousand dollars a year. So that, that's good, because that'll directly affect the residents.
You go, Mayor.
Yeah, so that was great. And it was unanimous, too. How, no, I didn't do any work. It was, it was, Terry Carroll from Wayne County, um, the Wayne County Commissioners, everybody was not on board, because some of the communities, the richer communities are getting less money now.
Right.
The county went out and negotiated, negotiated, and brought everybody home, and it was unanimous decision, which rarely happens, rarely happens. So that was great. State and county I went to last week, it was good events, a lot of things going on. People need to keep up with what's going on in the county, because it directly affects us. Uh, the park situation with Heinz Park, that was discussed. People need to read up on that, so they know the facts. There were protesters outside, and then you go inside and you get the information from the administration. So everybody needs to take a look at that, see how they feel about what's going on with Heinz Park. That was a big conversation at the county meeting. Um, a lot of good things going on. We're not out of the woods in the county, just like in the city or anyplace else. They have a lot of unfunded, uh, responsibilities, uh, legacy costs, healthcare insurance, retirees. So no different than us in, in many of the cities. So we're still working, but the county's growing. Things are getting better. People are coming in here. There's a lot of development coming to this county. Um, so we want to be a part of that, so we can reap some of those benefits. So that's going well. Met with Joel Jones today. It is budget time at the state. Everyone knows about the gas tax that the gov, governor proposed. She proposed her whole budget. So our state representative came down and said, "Okay, what, what does Inkster need?" So we talked about, you know, we need a lot of stuff. So we talked about a lot of different things. So he would make sure he could go back and lobby on our behalf. So I just want, you know, he is working for you. Um, and that's all I have, so. We'll see everybody April. April. All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
Not yet. Okay, we got some. On Saturday at Starfish, they had what they call Pie Day, where a lot of the kids got together and they was figuring out the, the numbers of pie, you know? Some people know that pie is infinity, but they had a lot of games and, um, they had a whole lot of fun. You probably saw a picture of me on Facebook trying to eat cotton candy. But it was, it was a lot of fun, and, uh, we need to get out and support our children more often, and just want to say, uh, thank you to the group that, that, uh, put that together.
Operation Refuge.
Yeah, yeah, Operation Refuge, yeah. Motion for adjournment.
Support. Can probably move supportive discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, go home.